Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 17th, 2022 Erie City Planning Commission Meeting. To call the order, Mark Klecker Chair present. Rich?
Eric.
Tony, I'm assuming is absent. Jason, absent. Amanda, is she on? Nope. Ann Collin.
Present.
Present. Thank you. Okay, we have a quorum then. Everybody read the minutes from April. Are there any corrections or any mistakes or anything, anybody? Nope. Okay, I need a motion.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor. Hi.
All right.
So moved.
Nice.
All right. Jake, you want to take this now?
Sure. Next up on the agenda, we do have a presentation. Jenny Tompkins is online from Penn Future, and she'd like to provide a presentation regarding Environmental Advisory Councils. Jenny, the floor is yours.
Do I have confirmation that everyone can hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm going to share my screen, so if you could also confirm that in just a minute.
Yes.
Can everyone see?
Yep, that's good.
Great, so I will take about 10 to 15 minutes of your time to talk about Environmental Advisory Councils. And I'm sorry that the sound of Zoom is making my dog bark in the background already. My name is Jenny Tompkins. I am the Campaign Manager for Clean Water Advocacy with an organization named Penn Future. That is a statewide environmental advocacy organization, and I am our sole Erie Mace employee. I'm going to talk to you about Environmental Advisory Councils, or EACs, and the work that a group of volunteer environmentalists, and myself, and my predecessor from Penn Future, have done to assess the feasibility of an EAC for the city of Erie. So I mentioned this group that's been working together to do research on Environmental Advisory Councils. The foundation for that work is a Common Agenda created by Penn Future, known as the Our Water, Our Future Common Agenda for Protecting Pennsylvania's Lake Erie Watershed. This was published in late 2020 and had sign-on approval from 12 other environmental organizations around Erie. And you'll see a list of them here on the right. I won't go into too much detail about all of these, but this is a wide breadth of the groups that represent and are concerned about water quality in particular, which we identified as the overarching concept we wanted to frame a policy document around. And the Common Agenda features just over 50 policy and budgetary-based recommendations at municipal, county, state, and federal levels of government. And one of the key recommendations at the municipal level would be the creation of Environmental Advisory Councils. And the city of Erie was identified as a key starting place to create an EAC, given the makeup of elected officials and a strong commitment to water quality and sustainability moving forward as it revitalizes and considers its future. So, moving on from there, I just wanted to give a list of names of the folks who've contributed to this research group. We started back in June 2021. The mayor had initially supported this idea, but there was more information needed, and support was lent to some staff at the city level to understand more about Environmental Advisory Councils. And I won't go into the organizational affiliation of all the folks on the screen, but they represent pretty much the breadth of the 13 groups that contributed to the Common Agenda. So more on what we actually researched and learned about EACs and what I can impart on you to discuss a little bit about how EACs function with planning commissions and other places in the Commonwealth. Start with an overview of EACs first. They are advisory in nature only. They are authorized under Act 148 of 1973 and established via ordinance at the municipal level. However, they can also be multi-municipal, and those exist in some parts of the Commonwealth. There are about 150 EACs across the Commonwealth, however, none function currently in Northwest Pennsylvania. The city of Meadville is also considering the formation of an EAC right now. It can have up to seven voting members, all of whom are residents, and they must create an annual report to provide to elected officials the same way that the MPC requires of planning commissions. And they must comply with the Sunshine Act. And I just mentioned some of their key responsibilities here. I'll go into a little bit more detail because I included the exact language from Act 148. There are five designated responsibilities of EACs. And I'm just going to read these off briefly. They're pretty general in nature, and you'll see some examples I'll give of what EACs do and have done successfully across the Commonwealth, that they can be involved in a wide range of activities around the environment and natural resource conservation. But to start, EACs identify environmental problems and recommend plans and programs to the appropriate agencies for the promotion and conservation of natural resources and the protection and improvement of the quality of the environment. They make recommendations as to the possible use of open land areas. They promote a community environmental program. They can keep an index of all open areas, publicly or privately owned, funding flood-prone areas, swamps, and other unique natural features to comment on the proper use of those areas. And they advise appropriate local government agencies, including planning commissions and recreation and park boards, or if none, the elected governing body or bodies, and the acquisition of both real and personal property as it relates to the environment. So what does that actually mean in practice? I researched three different EACs in third-class cities and other parts of the state, and wanted to give some examples of some of the initiatives that they've done successfully. Allentown and Bethlehem are both in the Lehigh Valley and are extremely successful EACs, and operate within their own network and collaborate together. Harrisburg unfortunately was an EAC that dissolved at the end of 2021 due to some internal political issues, but they did a lot of great work when they were in operation. So, starting with Allentown, they've been associated with air quality monitoring, particularly in areas of persistent poverty and environmental justice areas in the city. They've done development review associated with large warehouse projects that are popping up more and more in eastern PA. They've done a litter reduction campaign and a full greenhouse gas inventory for the city. Bethlehem worked alongside staff to create a climate action plan. They're currently revising the city's solar ordinance to be more inclusive. They mentor local university students through Lehigh University and provide a platform for the public to learn more about environmental research. And they have a really active subcommittee with advisory board members that are non-voting from the public that have a Backyards for Wildlife program that promotes pollinator-friendly species, native plants, and other best management practices to provide habitat for wildlife. In Harrisburg, they did a citizen tree maintenance assistance grant program that targeted senior citizens that were not financially or physically able to manage street trees that via ordinance like the city of Erie are the responsibility of landowners. They had some key field-to-meadow conversion projects that prioritize native plantings. What I was most impressed with was they had an environmental team corps that was made up of youth at high school and college age that would partner with professionals in green industries and sectors who would provide mentorship and do stewardship projects out in the environment with these groups, and speak to them about the importance of their roles and responsibilities as professionals. And they also had an illegal dumping prevention program because Harrisburg has incredibly high tipping fees for refuse. They had illegal dumping issues, and they were able through grant funds to try to prevent that from happening by assisting with bills for refuse. So those are three examples of really successful city EACs. I have contact information for all of these, and they were more than forthcoming. So they will be great connections to have and peers to have as we continue forward. I wanted to give a little bit of context about how two city EACs, Reading and Bethlehem, have partnered with planning concepts. I mentioned that EACs are required of annual reports, so I took excerpts from the two annual reports in Reading and Bethlehem. And in Reading in particular, they worked with planning and zoning officials to recommend two new environmental ordinances in 2015 for the city related to alternative energy and riparian buffer protection, ground streams. They prepared formal comments for update to a comprehensive plan and engaged with the planning commission and staff in that update process. And they collaborated to integrate open space and green space concepts within their city's Complete Streets initiative and ordinance, which I know has been mentioned within your ranks about re-engaging the community on the topic of Complete Streets. In Bethlehem, just in one month in 2019, they did a great job of showcasing the different roles that EACs can have. EACs will often be associated with SADO processes, including development review and concept plan review. In Bethlehem, they are. And they've provided recommendations for this one Martin Tower development associated with urban density, shared parking, trees, green space, buffer areas, energy, and stormwater management. And they consistently provide review and comment, make recommendations on all of those topics. They still do in 2022. They sent a letter to city council regarding the development of a solar energy ordinance. Their Backyards for Wildlife Committee that I mentioned, that's really active, provided a letter associated with the sale of specific city-owned properties. And they provided a cost analysis comparing electric vehicles versus gasoline vehicles to city officials. So while all of this isn't directly tied to planning, I hope it shows the diversity of projects and the different topics that EACs can provide advisement on. So our group, a research group, came up with a list of topics that it would be great if an Erie EAC was consulted on. And I don't need to go into a ton of detail here, but I'll show some highlights. As we've seen, another EAC, stormwater management is a key topic that EACs focus on, zoning variance, land developments, conditional uses, particularly in areas with unique natural resource features, changes to parks and open space, development of climate action plans, sustainability plans, and other plans on the environment, even comprehensive plans, as we saw, activities that impact natural resources and water and air quality and soil quality, and often recycling and composting activities at the municipal level. Lastly, I wanted to just showcase, our group came up with what we're calling the roadmap for the creation of an Erie EAC. We are currently kind of between stage one and two, as you'll see on the top left. We have briefed the mayor on this concept and all of the benefits that an EAC can bring, and city council, specifically city council president, Allen. We are now at the stage where we're kind of introducing this idea to other boards and authorities to give examples of how an EAC would function and work together and collaborate with those groups. And I'm starting with you all today. The next step would be a city council session that would move into a meeting with internal department heads at the city to discuss an EAC concept, followed by a public education campaign that involves other environmental groups, neighborhood and community groups, and is an opportunity to get potentially others involved and engaged in this process who might be interested in serving on what would eventually be an EAC. The hope would be to have a public meeting, followed by ordinance drafting. There are many, many example ordinances. WeConserve PA, which was formerly the Pennsylvania Land Trust Association, has a directory of resources and manages the EAC network in Pennsylvania, and they provide examples from other EACs. We then move into solicitor review and hopeful passage of an ordinance, followed by the application and selection process for the EAC, bylaw creation, which again, there are many, many examples out there from other EACs. And then many EACs work through an annual work plan or multi-year strategic planning process with elected officials. I know this is similar to planning commissions. I previously worked at Crawford County Planning, and there was always a visioning or work plan session with our planning commission as they laid out their goals for the coming year. The same would happen for an EAC. And then hopefully the first public meeting. So that kind of lays out what would ideally happen for the proper infrastructure to allow an EAC to succeed in a municipality. Our group of volunteers from the Common Agenda partners are able to help through all of these processes and guide based on the knowledge we've gained through our research, and consult with other EACs along the way as we have questions that arise. So with that, I have my contact information here, and I'm happy to address any questions about EACs or their involvement with planning commissions. And I did include a last slide, and I can share these resources and the slides with everyone, but this is where we've gleaned a lot of our information from. And it includes a link to the Common Agenda that I was referencing that is that policy-based document. All right. Do we have any questions?
So I know this is, this is Colin. I know this is probably a tough one to answer, but what does funding typically look like for these? You know, and I think it's probably just as a percentage of, you know, what CC, or how is this, something like this typically financed?
So they can have their own budget associated from the municipality. Some EACs will have certain funds that they get a portion of at the municipal level, but on a basic level, the budget for an EAC is about $200 to do an announcement in the newspaper at the beginning of the year saying when the public meetings are going to be. EACs have the ability to fundraise publicly and privately on their own and conduct grant writing. Harrisburg is a good example of that. They worked with city staff to, I think, manage four or five different grants in the last five years. So there's a lot of flexibility, is the point that I'm trying to make. Did that answer your question, Colin?
Yeah, mostly. I guess as a follow-up, do you see the more successful EACs primarily going through the private, getting funds from private or from foundations, if you will, or more publicly funded?
Publicly, actually. Bethlehem is a good example. I talked to them, and they said their budget's been about $300 since 2007, and they're able to do a ton of work just through volunteer work and alignment with the local university. And then you've got EACs like Harrisburg that were functioning with several hundred thousand dollars of public grants through DCNR, DEP, and other sources, and were able to have these successful large programs because of it. So it's a range. There's a lot that can be done that's low-hanging fruit, that's really volunteer work.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
What's the next step?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, what's the next step in your process?
Yeah, so right now, after I speak with the planning commission, my goal is to speak with some of the other city boards and authorities that might overlap with an EAC. Zoning Hearing Board, the Urban Forest Committee come to mind in particular next. And then the hope would be to schedule a city council session to talk in more detail about the ordinance in particular that is needed to create an EAC and the requirements under Act 148.
We're not looking for any action today.
Yeah, no, this is just informational. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly.
Thanks, Jenny. When we get to that point where there's thought or commitment from the city on preparing an ordinance, I'm assuming that's when the planning commission will get re-engaged.
Yes, and it's fairly common for an EAC to share a member with a planning commission, just given how much they can overlap, particularly around development. So I would encourage, if we get to that stage, and when we get to that stage, that if any of the planning commission members are interested in serving on the EAC, I think that could be a great alignment.
Okay, thank you.
Our West Bayfront Plan. Our West Bay Front plan.
Anna, do you have anything to add from our discussion last month?
Good afternoon. Can you elaborate on our West Bay Front?
I don't hear it.
You don't hear it? Okay. Oh, there we go. So I'm back, I think it was two or three weeks ago that I presented the community plan for our West Bay Front with our specific goals for the next five years, and I think at this point, we're just seeking the planning commission's recommendation for this to move to city council for adoption by resolution. Although hopefully Jake can correct my language if I didn't exactly get that title correctly. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the plan.
Now, we are, we are voting to send this to council, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So what we discussed last month was essentially the process of folding these neighborhood plans into, essentially into the city's comprehensive plan, so in the planning process. So this is kind of the next step in that process to bring this plan in, recommend that council endorse the plan, doesn't technically get kind of incorporated into the city's comp plan, but it's recognized as a neighborhood plan that's consistent with the comp plan.
All right. Yeah, we need a vote, so I need a motion to send this?
I will make a motion to recommend the city council that they accept and adopt the resolution attached to today's meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Anna.
In front of you today is a request for the planning commission to designate the following 25 properties that have been previously designated blighted by the Blighted Property Review Committee as blighted so that those can be forwarded over to the Redevelopment Authority for acquisition through condemnation. The 25 properties as provided to you are, and you want me to go through each of them individually and talk about them, or, you know, just kind of mention all 25 addresses?
Jake, what do you think? Do you have to go do that?
I mean, we can access, we can access the photos, the summary sheets that you put together. It's really up to you to see if you do want to go through them individually.
Yeah, I'll just read off the list of addresses and if you have a specific question.
Before you do that, can you give us kind of a general idea of the process to get them to this point? And in general, the types of conditions that exist that really kind of get them this blight designation to begin with?
Okay, so in order for them to get to the blighted process, they've worked through the code enforcement process in its early stages through the attempt for voluntary compliance by the property owner, through the notice of violations, ultimately citations to the district magistrate. You know, every attempt has been made by the code enforcement office and the officer to gain compliance and remediation of the property maintenance issues, at such a point that the officers feel they are getting nowhere. They forward it on to and present it in front of the Blighted Property Review Committee for the designation of blight. At that time, the property meets one of the nine criteria under the urban redevelopment law and must be, you know, meet one of those, and most of the time, they're vacant. Utilities have been disconnected for some time. There's potential for water liens from the Water Authority, municipal liens from the city of Erie for refuse, trash removal, things like that. They're also in severely deplorable condition in most cases. Roofs are collapsing, porches are falling apart, windows are broken, there are nuisance to the fire department, the police department is, you know, are called to these properties on multiple occasions. So those properties are presented in front of the Blighted Property Review Committee. That information is provided to them and then they vote on whether or not to designate the property as blighted. Once the property is blighted, the Redevelopment Authority, or a notice of blight is sent to the property owner, and it starts a period of time in which they can appeal. They're given 30 days to remediate those issues, and if they fail to make the remediation of the property within 30 days, the Redevelopment Authority has the ability to follow this path and proceed with condemnation of the property.
So then essentially, when the planning commission comes into play, is that you need the planning commission's authorization to essentially take those next steps?
Yes, yeah, so the planning commission's designation, designating these properties as blighted will move that into, under the urban redevelopment law, into the next step so that these can be passed on to the Redevelopment Authority Board for their authorization for us to proceed with condemnation of these properties. Most cases, these properties have been declared blighted for, you know, 12 to 24 months, sometimes 36 months, so, you know, these have been a nuisance on the neighborhoods for some time and, you know, at a point in which some action needs to be done.
Okay. Hey Colin, do you have any questions for him?
At this point, no, I've got one possibly later, but are we planning to go through all of them or not?
We probably were not going to go through all of them. I mean, I've looked at them all, and I know you've looked at them all.
I figured.
Yeah, yeah, it's, this is kind of a brainer.
They all look about the same. They're trash, they're overgrown, there's holes in them, yeah, they're all about the same.
Yep.
So I guess the one question I have is, how many, if any, are inhabited at this time?
There is probably about 20 to 30% of them that are occupied at the current time. You know, right now, the properties listed on this list are vacant. We have certified that they are vacant within the last week. We've gone out and done a check on them to verify that they are still vacant and that, you know, they are in the same condition at which they were. Prior to this list being created, the Redevelopment Authority sent out a pre-condemnation letter to the property owners, giving them one final warning that condemnation would start proceeding at the beginning of May, and these property owners did not respond to that notice.
And just for, just for anybody's knowledge, I know, and over the years when we've gone through these, I know some of them can be rehabilitated by an outside contractor who would maybe want to purchase them at some point, but most of them...
Right, yeah, and typically 90 to 95% of these properties, once we get into them and evaluate them, you know, keep in mind right now, you know, the evaluation of this is done strictly from the exterior, and very, very rare occasion has code enforcement been inside these properties, you know, because the door was open, police were called, whatever the case would be. For most time, you know, we've seen these properties from the outside, so, you know, once we take possession of the properties and we evaluate the inside, there's a potential that a couple of these could be rehabilitation candidates, but, you know, there's been ones that have looked great from the outside or at least salvageable from the outside, and when we get inside, they're far from salvageable.
All right. Do you have any questions?
No.
All right, then, I need a motion to accept this.
As the planning commission's designate of the Blighted Property Review Committee, I'd be happy to make a motion that we designate the addresses listed as blighted.
Thank you very much, and do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Aaron.
Jake, for the SADO?
Thanks, Mark. As we've been discussing over the last few months, we've been reviewing the city's subdivision of land development ordinance. There's a couple of specific items that we've been looking at trying to incorporate into the ordinance. Number one, for land development plan review, formalizing that process, looking at the sections of the existing ordinance that would need to be amended in order to do that, and just looking at establishing the administrative processes. So as I've mentioned, the administrative processes, I think we've gotten a good handle on, we've created all of the forms, the process, all those items, so those are ready to go, ready to put that information up on the city's website to help bolster that information sharing. Now it really does come down to drafting the sections that would need to be amended to add that process, and also, we need to have more conversation with the city engineer's office about Complete Streets concept and how, where that belongs and how that fits in to the SADO. So that is, has been kind of phase two, that we haven't really had any earnest activity on yet. We really need the city engineer's office to be involved with that, so more to come on that. What I'm hoping to do for next month would be to prepare, have a draft prepared of the sections or section of the ordinance that we would need to amend. And then we do need to decide, you know, are we going to chip away at this and make a couple different amendments? Are we going to make one giant amendment to the entire ordinance? What's going to be the best way to accomplish that? That's where we're at.
All right. Thanks, Jake. Do we have any, any public comment?
Kathy Rozdick, 626 State Street is my home address until next Friday, May 27th, and then I'll be moving on to Harrisburg, but wanted to take this opportunity to thank everyone who sits on the planning commission and the zoning staff, those in the audience that I've interacted with, the Redevelopment Authority a lot. Appreciate all the time that you have dedicated to the city before I arrived and since I've gotten here. It has been a pleasure to work beside each and every one of you. This was not an easy decision for me, but it was one that I felt like I needed to make when I made it, so I'm going to stick to it. I, I think that you and the other boards and commissions that I've had the privilege of working with have done a tremendous job over the last couple of years to really change the way that we're looking at Erie and we're looking at Erie's future. And for me, that certainly leaves me with, with hope that we've set the right trajectory for the city. I would only say that the things that I didn't get to that I wish I had, and Jake just talked about one of them, is the land use policies that are in your purview to effect. Your zoning and your SADO are in need of a refresh on many different levels, and I would encourage you to not lose focus of those things, and also to continue to support the neighborhood strategic planning efforts. We've sort of had to take a little pause on that as we pivoted to address ARP and get that allocated in the best way that we could. But I have to say that because of the hard work that we've done in the planning department with the planners and the planning commission, we were very well positioned to address how best to allocate the ARP funding in many different areas, and we've been able to do a tremendous amount because of the hard work that we put into the planning effort and understanding what our goals and priorities are. And that's a tribute to the work that you, that you do and will continue to do when I'm gone. So just wanted to say thank you and send everyone off with best wishes and to keep on your work plan, your zoning ordinance and your SADO, because I think that's the next big hurdle, but thank you very much.
Thanks, Anna. Great working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, if you don't have anything else, Jake?
No.
All right. We need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye.